Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 25, 2016 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Here. And as you can tell from the roll call, Mayor Devine is absent, and I will be serving in the capacity of the Chair of the meeting. Who would like to say the flag salute? Ms. Friedman, would you join us? Would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Certainly. Please rise, and as we renew our pledge to the flag, let's think about our forces overseas. Ready, begin.
A Delegated Act of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, under God, in the municipal, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. This evening, we pray for the continual health and vitality of our city. We give thanks for the citizens who give freely of their time in support of the community. We pray for safety of those who serve to protect our great nation, as well as pray for the safe return of our men and women serving overseas. Let us reflect on all that we have been given as citizens and residents of this fair city and actively seek ways to give back. We pray for all this and that our council and committee be guided by principles of fairness and cooperation during tonight's meeting and always. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the October 25, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 20, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item, please.
Three, presentation and appointments. Three A, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, November 1, 2016.
Ms. Beers.
We'll go to Deputy City Manager John Tuktalian.
Tuktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Najarian, members of the City Council. Next Tuesday in the afternoon, there's only one item on the Glendale Housing Authority agenda, and that's the approval of minutes of the meeting on October 25, 2016. However, there is a special meeting of the Glendale City Council at 3:00. There's two items on that meeting. The first one is the Director of Community Development and the Fire Chief regarding the adoption of the 2017 Glendale Building and Safety Code, followed by a report from the Director of Community Development regarding the Rockhaven Summary of Proposals. Following that meeting, there will be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority to discuss the City of Glendale and Glendale Housing Authority's procedures for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970, as amended, and the state's sequel guidelines, as amended. The evening meeting of the Glendale City Council has two items under consent. At 4B is a Director of Public Works regarding the Burbank-Glendale Traffic System Coordination and I-5 North Construction Impact Mitigation Project. And at 4C is a report from the City Attorney regarding the biennial report on the need to revise the City of Glendale's Conflict of Interest Code. Under action items, Director of Human Resources will provide a report on a memorandum of understanding between the City and the Glendale Police Officers Association, followed by a report from the Directors of Public Works and Community Development regarding the Beeline Maintenance Facility Design and Construction Services. The City Clerk will provide a report calling for and giving notice of the Glendale Municipal Election to be held on Tuesday, April 4, 2017, followed by the City Attorney with the report discussing potential ballot measures amending the city charter relating to term limits for council members. There will be a report from the City Manager's Office regarding proposed code amendments to Section 4.12 of the Glendale Municipal Code pertaining to city contracts. And finally, Director of Public Works regarding adjustments to Orange Street Parking Meter Zone and elimination of metered parking and space exclusions. Finally, under hearings, there's two. At 9A is the Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, relating generally to circular driveway standards in single-family residential zones. And at 9B is a report, actually, it's an Appeal of Demolition Permit Application Number PDPRV-1601877 located at 1420 Valley View Road. That concludes my report.
Ms. Beers, would you like to elaborate on any of those items?
I would. Mayor Protam Najarian, as it relates to the Rockhaven item that will be before you on November 1, as John Tuktalian covered, at 3:00 p.m. at a special meeting. If I can just take a few minutes and tell you what the process is going to be. Tomorrow, October 26, we are going to release all of the proposals to the public, the seven proposals that we received as part of the RFP for the Rockhaven Sanitarium. They will be released publicly, so they will be placed online on our website, under the city's website, under Economic Development. We'll also have hard copies available in the City Clerk's office, as well as the Economic Development offices, so that if someone doesn't have access and would like to have a hard copy to peruse, they can do so in those two offices. Now, on November 1, which is a week from today, in the afternoon, we will have a special meeting of the City Council, and it will commence at 3:00 p.m. This meeting is an information-only meeting. It's a presentation to the City Council and the community, and this will be the opportunity for staff to be able to provide and summarize, give a matrix to the City Council as it relates to the proposals that were received. Again, it's an opportunity for the council to ask questions, for the community to give feedback if they so choose. On the 15th of November, which is two weeks from today, in the evening, at the regularly-scheduled council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m., at that meeting, staff will present to the City Council the recommendation for the award of the exclusive negotiating agreement for the Rockhaven Sanitarium. So that evening, staff will bring a recommendation forward, and again, the council will be able to ask questions and, of course, receive information from the community as necessary as well. So wanted to make sure that we put that information out there. I know there's been a lot of interest from the community, so all the proposals, and there were seven of them that were received, as it relates to the RFP that was released in March of this year, they will be online as of tomorrow morning.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aram, let's go to the next item. Thank you. Will the representatives from Family Promise of the Verdugos come forward? Why don't you introduce yourself, and then I'll read the proclamation?
You've got it. Good evening. I'm Albert Hernandez. I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise.
Nancy Guillen. I'm the Vice President of the Board.
Well, thank you for coming out this evening. We do have a proclamation. Whereas families with children are among the largest-growing segment of the homeless population in our community, and whereas since 2010, Family Promise of the Verdugos has provided safe shelter, meals, and support services for homeless families through programs designed to redress the underlying causes of homelessness; and whereas Family Promise of the Verdugos serves Burbank, Glendale, and surrounding communities through an interfaith hospitality network of local congregations and volunteers; and whereas Family Promise of the Verdugos has a 96% success rate of returning families to sustainable independence; and whereas Family Promise of the Verdugos will join with 200 other Family Promise communities throughout the country this week to shine a spotlight on the increasingly prevalent issue of family homelessness, drawing more volunteers and donors to assist them in their noble cause. Now, therefore, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaims October 16, 2016 as National Family Promise Week in the City of Glendale, and wish them continued success for many years to come. I'm happy to be on your advisory board. I know Councilmember Friedman is as well, and I'm going to pass this on to her to present to you in person.
Thank you. Well, it's my pleasure to present this to you. The work that you do is so important, and you have an incredible success rate, and that's because you go out and work in the community, with the community. So congratulations for all of your hard work.
Would you like to say a few words?
Of course. We'd like to, first of all, thank the council and the city staff for taking time to recognize National Family Promise Week. We're very honored to be here in the City of Glendale. This past year, we recently opened up a resource center about two blocks away over at Glendale First United Methodist. Since we've opened up in August, we've been able to at least serve about two dozen families that were referred by the school districts. We're very honored and excited to continue our partnership with the city and local nonprofit agencies, and we appreciate your support tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. You're doing great work. Well, let's give him a round of applause. And the next item, Aram.
3C, Police Officer William Donley, 30-Year Service Award.
Okay. Lieutenant, tell us about this gentleman that we've never seen before.
My name is Captain Stuart Bracken, Mayor Protam Najarian, members of City Council, Ms. Beers, and assembled staff. I beg your indulgence for just a few minutes as we go over some of the highlights of Bill's 30-Year Service Award, and I'm honored to do this for Officer Bill Donley. Bill, if you want to come on up? He's not going to make me stand up here by myself. Bill was hired in September of 1986 and entered the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy on October 13, 1986, Class Number 234. This was the first LASD Academy class to use the North Academy, run out of the College of the Canyons in Santa Clarita. He graduated the academy in February 27, 1987, and began field training with his training officer, Tim Spruill, on March 15, 1987 with Patrol Group B. He worked traditional eight-hour days, five days a week, a little different than what we do now. He also rotated shifts every four months, going from day shift to swing shift to graveyard shift. That type of rotational shift work was brutal, and fortunately, we've evolved from that. Upon completion of his field training and probationary period, Bill continued to work patrol until he was able to get his first transfer to the Galleria Detail in June of 1988. This was a welcome transfer. As for him, it meant no more graveyard shifts and shift rotations. For the next 28 years, actually, he would not work another graveyard shift. Nice job, Bill. The Galleria Detail was an opportunity for him to work the multitude of retail crimes which occur daily at the various stores throughout the mall and develop and hone certain skills as an investigator. This assignment was a fun detail for him, with lots of undercover work, surveillances, and foot pursuits. It also involved a lot of complicated fraud schemes and identity thefts of all kinds. All of his time and experience at the Galleria led him to his next transfer. On September 9, 1990, Bill transferred to the Detective Bureau, assigned to the Juvenile Bureau as a gang investigator. This was a newly-formed, full-time gang unit, the first one that Glendale PD ever had. While LAPD had their crash unit, GPD had our very own GASP unit, Gangs and Special Problems. They had a very unique assignment, doing street enforcement on Friday and Saturday nights, and then handling all of the investigative follow-ups with the DA, filings during the week. It was a fantastic assignment and one where he learned and grew as both a gang officer and a detective, handled all gang-related crimes in the city, from vandalism to gang homicides, and this was the time period when they were all getting their first new Mac Classic desktop computers. Bill initiated the first gang database and was able to help use it to help LAPD solve a drive-by homicide. He also solved an in-house drive-by homicide by utilizing one of his informants to identify the shooter. The suspect was ultimately tried and convicted and got life in prison. All of this training and experience allowed him to attain his next assignment. On January 2, 1992, Bill was assigned as a detective to the Los Angeles County Arson Task Force, charged with the investigation and prosecution of John Orr, the most prolific serial arsonist in the history of Los Angeles County, and perhaps in the history of the nation. John Orr was a Glendale Fire Department captain and was in charge of the department's Arson Investigations Unit. John Orr was also an arsonist who had been setting fires throughout the state of California for decades. They were charged with gathering the evidence necessary to prosecute and convict him. As a result of their work, Orr was given life in prison with no chance of parole. The major convictions included the South Pasadena Ollies Fire, in which four people died, the Glendale College Hills Fire, which destroyed 64 homes, and the Burbank Studios Fire, which destroyed huge movie sets and sound studios in the Burbank Mort's Surplus Fire, which destroyed a large commercial building in Burbank. This was an extremely challenging and rewarding assignment for Bill, which lasted two years. Had it not been for their work, John Orr would have been able to walk out of prison a free man after serving only seven years for setting three small fires outside of LA County. It should be noted that they were able to document dozens of other fires, which were attributable to Orr, even though, excuse me, even though they were unable to charge him with all of them. It was clear that Orr set hundreds of fires throughout his life, and he needed to be put away in prison for life so that he could no longer mend a society. After the Arson Task Force was concluded, Bill was transferred directly to his next assignment, the Glendale Police Department's Air Support Unit, on January 2, 1994. This had always been a dream and a goal of his. Once there, he was first trained as an observer, or what is now called a tactical flight officer. The observer is one who does the job of communicating what is seen from the air to the troops on the ground who are handling the situation. The variety of calls the air crews handle are countless. Everything from residential burglary alarms to robberies and progress. They were also involved in a variety of surveillance activities with the different detective details, such as narcotics and burglary units. His next major challenge in the unit was to become a helicopter pilot. Once trained and certified, Bill continued to serve the unit as a line pilot for the next eight years. During that time, he was part of a program that they developed to work with the Glendale Fire Department to perform swift water rescues. They would train to pull victims out of the LA River and surrounding flood control channels. The system they developed was one in which they would attach a firefighter to the end of a long cable and lower him into the rushing water. They no longer trust us to do that. I'm not sure why, but... The firefighter would then grab the floating victim, and they would then lift them both out of the water with the helicopter and place them safely onto the shoreline. They were recognized for these efforts with a national award, as well as a departmental award. Bill was proud to serve in the Air Support Unit for a total of 10 years. On January 18, 2004, he was transferred back to patrol. Bill worked the streets again as a patrol officer for the first time in 15 years. For the next nine years, he worked patrol in the West Command area of the city. He was able to develop and nurture numerous citizen support groups, and he was charged with developing and mentoring the new officers who worked on the west side of town with him. Bill enjoyed this time as being back in the trenches again and being that first line of defense in the city. He also enjoyed teaching the young officers how to make their way in the most challenging of careers. This led to his next transfer and current assignment. On April 28, 2013, Bill was transferred to the Area Command Unit, formerly known as COPS, our Community and Policing Partnership. This assignment is all about being involved in the community in an effort to really solve problems and come up with long-term solutions. Again, he was charged with developing and nurturing citizen support groups and with assisting our patrol officers to better serve our community. That unit, which has changed names again and is now called the Crime Impact Team, deals with the endless problems which arise in any metropolitan city which is growing and changing with the times. They strive to bridge the gap between law enforcement and the community that we serve. They strive, excuse me, Bill has also had the opportunity to serve as the Sergeant-at-Arms for most of the City Council meetings for the past three and a half years. All in all, he has found this assignment in the Crime Impact Team to be one of the most challenging and rewarding in his 30-year career. It has given him an opportunity to use his gifts and strengths to the best of his ability. Bill is proud to be a member of this unit, and he is proud to have served the City of Glendale for these last 30 years. I give to you Officer Bill Donley.
Officer, would you like to introduce your family?
I have my girlfriend with me this evening, Lisa Schumaker. Also, other members of the department. Captain Michael Rock, Lieutenant Rodriguez, and the Deputy Chief Carl Povolitis. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, they are your family, aren't they?
They are. My son is off at college, so...
Let me present you the hardware. Your 30-year plaque and service award commendation. Here's a lovely lacquer box, the City of Glendale seal, along with an envelope that I'll leave taped, and there's a little something in there for you as well. And we're so proud of you. And when I said someone that we don't know, obviously, I was being facetious. You've been our Sergeant-at-Arms for the last three years, and you probably, outside of the City Council and management staff, you probably know more about the city now than anyone else.
More than I ever wanted to.
So please, the dais is yours. Say a few words.
Well, thank you very much. I didn't prepare anything. I didn't really want to give a big speech. I just wanted to say how proud, how proud I am to have served. I grew up here in Glendale. I went to Balboa, Toll and Hoover, Glendale College, and Cal State Northridge. When I chose to go into law enforcement, it was either going to be Glendale or Burbank, and my heart was truly with Glendale, and Glendale did give me the first job offer. So I took the offer, and here I am 30 years later. I never thought I would be here for that long. When I did begin my career, the retirement system was different, and the max you would ever work would be 25 years, and then it changed. We now work 30-year careers, and lo and behold, it's been 30 years. So thank you all very much, and gentlemen, use well.
Sir Clerk, what is the next item?
Mayor Protam, and Council, next item is the Consent Items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience may request separate consideration by making such requests before a motion is proposed. And we do have requests to pull Item 4D, as well as 4E. 4D and 4E have requests from the audience for comments.
Is there a motion to move the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
A sec.
Okay. Let's take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes. Please read 4D.
4D is Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding Proposed Grant Application for the California Youth Soccer and Recreation Development Program. D1 is a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the State of California's California Youth Soccer and Recreation Development Program.
Very well. I have a card from Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. You know, this is about grant money. There's nothing wrong with grants. Mayor Protam, Mr. Najarian, as you would say, the taxpayers' money. That's true. But you know, grants are wonderful when you don't have any money in your budget. Now, this is for the soccer fields, soccer department, Parks Department. Ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, did you know that the Park Department only has 10% of the budget? 90% of their funding, the park, is from grant money, just like this proposal. Where's all the money coming from? Where's all the money going to? Well, I think we're going the way of the City of Monrovia, because that's our city manager right now. I just happened to read in today's paper, or Sunday, cities are in trouble, and among them is the City of Monrovia. Ridgecrest, Chico, this is the leadership we have, our city manager, and he's the one that decides and advises our council that we need to put more money into the soccer fields. He doesn't do that, because the city manager knows we don't have any more money for the soccer fields, because all the money is going where, folks, the viewing audience? Salaries and the pensions of our union workforce. We have 800 employees who are in between $100 and over $300,000 a year. That's why we have no money for our Parks Department. We have to count on grant money. Isn't that a shame? And you spend your money, hard-earned money, trying to make a living, but our people in the City of Glendale are employees that our council members have cherry-picked. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
A sec.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes. 4E, please.
4E is Chief of Police Regarding State of California Office of Traffic Safety Grant Program for Speed Enforcement, Distracted Driving Enforcement, Motorcycle Enforcement, DUI Saturation Patrols, and DUIIDL Checkpoints. E1 is a motion authorizing grant participation. E2 is a resolution of appropriation.
Card from Mr. Mohill.
While I was coming up, Mr. Mayor Protam, there is a revised motion on the dais. It was just a typo that's been corrected, so that'll be part of the motion.
So we don't have to move that separately, right? Okay.
Evening, Councilmembers. Again, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience. Again, we're talking about grant money. Why doesn't the police department have enough money to do these programs? After all, fire and police get 80% of the general fund. Now, I had mentioned high-risk cities before and the management of our, in this case, the police department. Cities that are under monitored by the State of California as auditors because they are in trouble. Those cities were, besides the City of Monrovia, where Mr....
Mr. Mohill, let's talk about this grant.
That's right, because our city manager, who came from Monrovia, which is listed in the newspaper as under watch, because they have problems, and he was the manager, Mr. Najarian, of Monrovia, and now he's the manager here. And City Council looks to our city manager, as you know, Mr. Najarian, for leadership, because we are a city manager, former government. We are not a strong mayor. Our mayor here is weak, so we count on the city manager for leadership. That's why we have nothing but grant money today, for everything, because our money is being drained from every department, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience. It's going from your pocket to the employees of the City of Glendale. 800 employees have salaries between $100 and over $300,000, $100,000 a year, and that's why they count on grant money, because we have two pre-rolls too, don't we, Mr. Najarian? Current employees and retirees. Retirees are getting 90% of their last year's salary as their pension for life if they're either in the Fire Department or in the Police Department. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a grant in the amount of $295,000, which will be used by our police department to conduct field enforcement, field education. It'll be used to stop speeders, to stop drunk drivers, and to catch those who have skipped out on their court appearances for driving under the influence. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm all the way in.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes. Thank you. Let's go to the next item.
Next item on this agenda is City Council and Staff Comments, item 5.
Ms. Friedman.
There were a lot of events this last week, but I just want to single out one combined event, which was the Canines in the Park, which benefited the Glendale Police Foundation and the Kiwanis Duck Splash. This is one of our signature events in the city and certainly my daughter's favorite event, because it had dogs and rubber ducks, and what could a three-year-old like more than that in a Saturday afternoon? I think that they were both very successful. There were hundreds and hundreds of people there. People were supporting the police. They were supporting the Kiwanis and all the good work that they do. And I want to congratulate all of the organizers of both events. It's just really grown into being an incredible day, and the Kiwanis do a lot of hard work to raise a lot of money to put right back into helping our community, and the Police Foundation raises money for the K-9 program and lots of other activities that the police department does out in the community. So congratulations to everyone, and thanks to everyone who attended and supported. and thanks to everyone who attended and supported.
You, Mr. Garpetian.
So I was filling in as the mayor, Protem. And so I was going to... All of these events. The K-9 in the Park was a great event, reminding us how important the canines are to law enforcement. The Great Duck Splash was an excellent fundraiser. And I do want to single out the young students. There were about two dozen booths from our local elementary schools. Young kids who set up their own little penny arcades, if you will, with different games where other kids can come in and buy tickets. And those funds would also go towards the Kiwanis Foundation. So not only do we have a great group of Kiwanis members who were there, but a great new crop of young K-kids, as they call themselves, from our elementary schools. The Adams Hill Neighborhood Association had a costume show for dogs. And it was in the... By the gas station, which has been decorated in a creepy Halloween theme. So it was a very good event. And cheers to the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association for putting that forward. Are there any comments from staff?
Okay, very well. Let's move on, Mr. Gesacca.
Item 6 is Community Event Announcements, three-minute portion, as well as the three-minute general public comment period where individuals who wish to forego the five-minute oral communications at the end of the meeting can submit cards to speak for three minutes.
Very good. I have a card from Al Hoffman.
Good evening, councilmembers and the public. Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. I sent you each an email this week about the Glendale City Council Bond Measure GC. This is an important, important bond that needs to be passed for a fantastic college in our city. There are not many cities have a college. And we should be proud of it. And we should put as much effort into this, the city, the staff, the council, as they did in defeating Measure M. You should put more effort in this bond measure than that one because it is certainly more important. It's for the whole community. I did get a message from Councilman Friedman and Mayor Devine that they got my message. That's all I've heard about it. But it takes more than just endorsing it and saying, oh, I support it. Got to get out and work for it. And that's what we need to do. We haven't really supported the college. I understand that they were talking about maybe buying the civic auditorium. I heard now they raised the price, the city did, three times from what they wanted. We shouldn't use the college to get us out of the financial crisis we're in because of past decisions that were made that shouldn't have been made and all the high salaries that we're paying out. And I just hope everybody goes out. The public should have gotten this notice in the mail from Dr. Viar encouraging us to support the college. I went to the college. It set my course. I started out in pre-dental because I didn't know what to do. One year, they gave me an aptitude test, found out I wasn't meant to be a dentist, and it said I should be an engineer, which I did. And that was my career at JPL and at T R W. And it was just a wonderful career. And I owe it all to Glendale College. They gave me that opportunity to start. And so many students need that first step. University of California, for years, wanted to eliminate lower division and have... Go to junior colleges, city colleges. The only reason it didn't happen is the athletic program. They couldn't give out scholarships to freshmen. So that was more important than educating our students and seniors. We have seniors that benefit. And one thing that really needs to be done is expansion of the vocational studies. And I'm encouraging the college to expand the Garfield campus because that would be an improvement for the area. And it would offload all of the traffic congestion, everything that's currently at the main campus that have a lot of people upset about. So please, two weeks from today, go vote for Measure GC. It's near the end of the ballot.
Next speaker is our enthusiastic Regina Valentine.
I have something to tell you about what happened on Saturday evening. This Saturday, October 22, 2016, at 9:50 PM, there was a funny noise that I felt in my house. I did not think about it until the emergency vehicles came up this hill. And I went to check the road. And outside, I saw a BMW on a power box that is high voltage, that is sitting in a hillside. The police had to call a tow truck. That took over an hour for them to get the car moved. Call a tow truck to lift off the car off the power box so it doesn't explode. Carefully lifted off the power box. The city should be responsible to put either a light there or reflectors so the cars know where they are going. Because people slow down when they see the police. But when the police isn't there, they go at least 60 and above and maybe almost 100 miles an hour. In just speeding... They just speed coming up and going down. And they don't care about it. We need something done about it. They think it is a joke to be racing or speeding on Chevy Chase during the day and late at night. They should take away their license until they know the rules of the road. They could be teenagers and any adult. Thank you.
Good questions.
Yes, Mr. Garpetian.
Without telling me your home address, can you tell me which street is this? What street do you live on?
Chevy Chase.
Chevy Chase?
Right across from the power box.
Power box, okay, thank you.
Right next to the Frank Lloyd Wright House. It's right, like, a few distances from the Frank Lloyd Wright House. And that power box is wide open now. It's not even under the... They removed the car. But the city doesn't come back and check if the power box is under the ground. It's not covered. It's fully covered. But if somebody hits it, it's going to open up. It's a per car, with a car, anything.
You're going to address it today here?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If Ms. Valentine can leave her address with the clerk, we can most definitely follow up.
Okay.
Mr. Zern, is that a hazard? Or is that a utility, like an AT&amp;T utility communication box?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I had no report of any kind of an outage or any compromise to our facility. So my guess is it's probably a telephone box. If it was ours, we would have been dispatched. We would have made it safe, and it would have been secured.
Well, let's just do a drive-by.
We will do that.
And make sure it's not a...
And if our friends at AT&amp;T haven't been notified or Verizon, we'll make sure they are.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frank Gallo. I am the president of Glendale Coalition for Better Government. And I am here for the following reason. The funding of the general fund with money transferred from the GWP has been taking place for many years in spite of several complaints by citizens about its legality. The city manager, the city attorney, and all councilmembers have been aware of a pending lawsuit that might be decided this week. And as a result of that, the transfer might have to be stopped. And some of the monies already transferred might be required to be reimbursed to the rate payers. Let's keep in mind that the general fund pays for the salaries of police, fire, and the general managers. Just two months ago, a contract was signed with the managers' union with no indication in that contract that it will have to be renegotiated pending a lawsuit. Ironically, some of those managers, some of those members of the union are the ones responsible for the misinterpretation of the law. Just last week, city council approved another contract with the police union. But unlike the contract with the city managers, the city-police-union contract was not conditioned to the outcome of the lawsuit, meaning that it might have to be renegotiated. Why do the managers have preferential treatment? Shouldn't the ones responsible for the mischief be the ones paying for it? If you are concerned about police and public safety as you were so concerned in the prior election, why should the police have to pay for the city attorney's mistakes? Don't you believe it's about time to have a ballot amendment requiring the city attorney to be elected so we can amend the charter? Do you think it's about time to make some changes so we don't have these lawsuits? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other cards.
Sure, can I just briefly respond? A couple points with respect to the provision that's in the GPO contract that was specifically put in there because of some of the issues regarding the stay issue. The judge had inquired as to whether or not the decision will be stayed upon appeal. And given the uncertainty of that, that's why it's in there. That came up after the GMA contract. I don't even know when that was. But in addition, the persons responsible for the interpretation of the particular provisions is issued, both the charter provisions and as it applies to Prop. 26, are me, my staff, Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Elliott, none of whom belong to the GMA. So there's no... That particular issue has no merit.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can add, I believe what Mr. Gallo is referring to as it relates to the GMA contract a few months ago, what was before the city council, probably less than two months ago, was a contract for GMA sworn fire managers, not GMA as a whole. And that group, I believe, has five or six individuals as part of that negotiating team. And at the end of the day, the contract that was signed for the term, and I don't have the terms in front of me, was around... It was less than $70,000. So as Mr. Garcia indicated, we did have some changed circumstances based on what was before us as it relates to the GFT lawsuit. Hence, we had to have language in place with the POA to make sure that we were protecting both the POA and ultimately the city and its constituents.
Next item under Action Items. ADA is Director of Library Arts and Culture Regarding Library Radio Frequency Identification, RFID, and Central Library Automated Materials Handling AMH Project. ADA 1 is a motion for the city council awarding a contract to TechLogic Corporation an amount of $800,000 and rejecting all other bids.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council, we have Cindy Cleary here, our Director of Library Arts and Culture as it relates to this item that is before you. But in short, we're respectfully recommending a motion to award a contract to TechLogic Corporation for an amount of $800,000, which was already approved in the 2014-15 budget cycle as it relates to the radio frequency identification system project, which is an automated collection system as well as the Automated Materials Handling Unit for Central Library. And this was as part of the renovation project. Ms. Cleary has a short presentation for you. If you would allow her to go through that quickly. Thank you.
My first time. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. I'm here to ask your approval to award a contract to TechLogic Corporation for an RFID, as Ms. Beers stated, and an AMH Automated Materials Handling System that allows for more effective management and processing of over 1.5 million items that we check out and check in on a yearly basis at our eight libraries. A couple benefits of the system. The system supports our new model of service, which includes... Which supports a new model of service that brings three desks at the central library to one desk, one service point, and encourages our staff to meet people at point of need. It increases our self-service options for customers who'll be able to check out and check in their own materials, pay fines, check their accounts, and be informed of upcoming events in library, both in the library and throughout the city. Manual, time-intensive work will be reduced by 50%, giving our staff more time for direct public service to answer questions, provide tech support, and develop and participate in library programming. Books and other items will be returned to our shelves more quickly. The system will improve security and provide better inventory control and thus reduce costs for replaced materials. And overall, the system will provide an enhanced customer-user experience and provide staff efficiencies that will allow more time spent on direct public service. Some of the components of the system include 17 self-service kiosks and 10 desktop units spread throughout our libraries, security gates at Brant's and Central, RFID tags that will be placed on over 550,000 items that are currently housed in our libraries, and an Automated Materials Handling System that will be installed at Central Library, which is basically an automated conveyor belt that will sort by type of materials and locations and allow us to deliver items more quickly to our shelves. The system also includes, or the contract also includes, a five-year maintenance agreement. We did go through an RFP process. Four firms responded, and we interviewed three of those firms. We're recommending TechLogic Corporation based on the rankings of a five-person team. And they were deemed to be the most responsive and the ones that met our needs in the best manner. The system will take about three months to install to actually tag 550,000 items. The AMH, or the Automated Materials Handling System, will be installed at the end of the Central Library renovation project. So we'll have the whole thing in place by the time we reopen Central Library in March. If you have any questions, I certainly can answer them. We also have a representative from TechLogic with us this evening.
Given the amount of time it's going to take for you to chip all of these items and then to continue to chip them, how does this pencil out in terms of being cost-efficient?
Oh, we're very fortunate, actually, right now because Central Library is closed. So we will be utilizing some of our part-time staff that are not employed at the moment to do the tagging, as well as our full-time staff. So I don't have it costed out, but it is a cost that is within our budget, and we won't need additional funds.
Right, no, I understand that. But going forward, I'm assuming that part of the reason to do this is to relieve this task from your staff and from library personnel. So I'm wondering, I'm assuming that you penciled out this cost versus hiring someone else to be the library front desk to check books in and out?
Well, we're estimating... I mean, I don't have the dollar amount, but we're estimating that it will reduce their labor to check in and check out books by about 50%, which will allow them to function in different ways.
So then, do you know what kind of what your payoff is in terms of length of time versus cost in terms of staff time?
Well...
In other words, assuming that this takes up 50% of their time, whatever that cost is of half of their time versus the cost of implementing this program and maintaining it, what is the cost-benefit? it, what is the cost-benefit analysis for doing this versus just having them do it or hiring more people?
Well, I can't, like I said, I can't give you the cost. I can certainly get back to you with that, but I don't have the cost-effectiveness of it, except for that it will be, I'll be able to deploy staff to other functions.
And in terms of the service model desk, I think it'd be good for you, Cindy, to touch on the new service model that you'll have in place as it relates to no longer having an actual circulation desk that's separate from a reference desk. It will all be under, you know, kind of a centralized location, and that efficiencies and the productivity that you're going to have from the staff, again, if you want to touch on that, I think that will also help set the framework.
Well, once again, we, at Central Library, we're going, we've had three desks where people performed a variety of functions, and so with the Central Library remodel, we will have one service desk. But the premise behind that is not that people necessarily will come to a desk, but that staff will come to people. So wherever people need to be served, whether it's for tech support, whether it's to check out an item, our staff will be on the floor, serving people where they need it most. So they'll help with the self-service kiosks. We'll have many more computers scattered throughout the library system. So the staff that would normally be behind closed doors checking out items or checking in items will be out on the public floor, helping people sign up to the Internet, find sites, troubleshoot their computers that they bring into the library. So in terms of the productivity, I think that the answer to the question is basically that we'll be able to provide more direct public service than we were ever able to do before.
I think that that's a good answer, and I'm sure that that's the case, and I'm definitely going to support this. I would just suggest in the future, I think that that kind of cost-benefit analysis is probably not hard for you to do, you know, if you assume that you want that greater outreach. So looking at what the cost would be to bring in more staff versus what this costs, it would just be something good, I think, for the council to, you know, have in front of them, to be able to make these kinds of decisions. And, you know, would be good just going forward too for your department to be able to say, "We implemented this, and we now have 50% more interaction with customers doing other things, and we've saved X amount of money from doing it," would be, you know, good in terms of having the evidence to expand it to all of the libraries, for instance.
I agree, and we will work on that and bring you back in a good answer, a better answer.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you. I agree with Councilmember Friedman. I think cost analysis is very important. Return on the investment is very important because technology is changing every day, and one thing I wanted to put out there is I just want to make sure this system is not a system that is going to be obsolete in two years, and we have to spend another few hundred thousand dollars to upgrade it. I want to make sure this is a system that will work for at least another 15, 20 years. And also, one quick question is, you indicated that we had an RFP done, and is this the lowest price on that RFP, or it was chosen because of the services that we provide is better than everyone else?
It was the lowest negotiated price in terms of the number of components that we required. It was a little difficult when we got the proposals because it wasn't apples-to-apples, and so we had to do some cost analysis. But it was, in terms of what we got, yeah, it was the lowest negotiated price. In terms of the longevity of it, it, there are, the system, although there have been improvements since this time, but this system has been in place in several libraries. The Seattle Public Library, for instance, has had this system in place for about 15 years, and it's still going strong. One of the reasons that we chose this company is because the automated handling system actually has fewer components to it, so less chance of breaking down. And included in the cost is a five-year maintenance agreement that will cover the cost of anything that might go wrong. But I, you know, I suspect that this will last 15, 20, 30 years into the future.
And we are going to install the RFID tags ourselves.
Yeah. With some assistance from the corporation, they will, they will give us some training in terms of how to do it and the best, most efficient way of doing it.
And this will, this will help us to put the items in the right place at our shelves, on our shelves, because as you were, you know, I was briefed on this item today, and that's why my memory is very fresh. You were indicating that you walk by an aisle and you scan it if there's an item that is in the right place, it would, it would just beep and...
The RFID chip has all the information about the book, including the Dewey decimal number, and so there's a handheld inventory control device that can scan a shelf, and it will pick out the book that's not in order, which is very cool in a library system because a lost book is, you know, no good to anybody. So that is another component of the system.
Very good. Thank you.
There is nothing worse than a misplaced library.
I agree.
I mean, the computer says we have it. It hasn't been checked out, but you go to where it's supposed to be, and it's not there.
I can tell you've had that experience. We will try to mitigate that.
I don't have any cards from the public. Would someone like to make a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Darpaian?
Yes.
Sinanian, Mayor Devine, Mayor Protem Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited in time. It's not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. The first card I have is from Tony Passarella. I understand, Mr. Passarella, you have a video that you wish to play. I have consulted with the city attorney, and the video and the subject matter in particular of which you wish to address is beyond the jurisdiction of the city council. So we will not be permitting you to play that video.
What do you mean by that, sir? What do you mean by that?
In other words, you may speak to items that are in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council.
I don't, I don't understand that. You're going to have to explain that to me.
Well, let me ask this.
Somebody please explain that to me.
Mr. Garcia.
You're quailing my free speech is what you're doing.
I'm what?
Quailing my free speech, shutting me down.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the council meeting, the council chambers are what's deemed to be a limited public forum, meaning in this, in this particular setting, members of the public who come and speak are entitled to speak and address the council on matters that are germane to the city council, that are within your subject matter jurisdiction, meaning pertain to matters that you have the ability to take action on or regulate, or are generally matters that are within the council's jurisdiction, the city's jurisdiction, to do something about. And this particular video, from what I viewed and what we viewed, is not, does not, does not germane to the city's authority.
Okay, so we will not play the video. You are entitled...
Mr. Garcia, and council members, you know, I'm a 29-year resident of the city. I've been coming here for a long time. I've seen people speak on just crazy things, have nothing to do with the city, nothing to do with what you're gonna, you know. So I'm not, I'm not really buying that.
Well, with respect, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have, we have invoked this particular provision of the Brown Act before, and oftentimes, certain speakers are in the room as well, when speaking off-topic on agenda items or speaking on matters that are not, not germane to the city council's jurisdiction, as you're aware.
So that's going to be my, my ruling as a chair. You can take that up any other way you'd like to. You can appeal it, perhaps, to the whole council or to the city attorney in a private conference?
Yeah, it's a free speech issue, people, and you, you're just shutting me down is what you're doing, just with all your mumbo-jumbo talk. It's, it's all nonsense. So you're going to stop me when I'm talking about this same issue? You're going to stop me then, too?
If it's on the same topic as...
It is on the same topic.
Again, and I don't see how that's relevant to what the council does, so...
It may not be relevant, but how many hundreds of people come before me over the years that talked about stuff that's irrelevant? And now all of a sudden...
And we have, we have at times utilized that authority in the Brown Act to not permit that particular commentary at the time.
Okay, so what is my course of action if I want to...
I'm happy to discuss it with you, Mr. Passarella, offline. I'm also happy, we're happy to discuss it with the mayor when she's, you can ask her. She'll be running the meeting next week. But that's, that's, I've conferred with the mayor, and that's certainly within his prerogative to choose not to show this material.
Okay. Well, just, just for the viewing public's information, the video was a very, very graphic and horrifying video on abortion, and that's what I was going to talk about tonight, and they shut me down.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella.
For the record, I haven't seen the video. I didn't watch it. I didn't even know about it, so I don't have no knowledge of the contents of the video.
Well, I just want to share with the viewing audience, if I may. You guys shut me down if you want, but I want to...
Thank you. Well, the next speaker...
My time is going, like, 4:30. I've got a lot of time here, Mr. Najarian. So I just want to share with the viewing public, when it comes time to vote on November 8th, look at this issue, the abortion issue, and look at your candidates...
I would just say it's not germane.
So this is where we're getting beyond...
Nationally or locally... I think it's the whole subject, not just the video, Mr. Passarella.
And vote your conscience. All right, I'll, I'll give you a call, because you just shut me down, basically.
Thank you. Mike Mohill. And we've shut down Mike Mohill before with...
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that was my reference.
And we try to encourage focusing on the subject that the city council has jurisdiction. You can...
Can I give you guys a gift? Let me present it.
Tell him to present the material to the clerk's office.
Present it to the... Mr. Mohill, come forward. Mr. Passarella is done. We're going to start your time, Mr. Mohill. We've got to run a meeting.
My name is Mike Mohill. In the primary election for the 43rd Assembly District, the Islamic Gulen Charter Schools' Independent Expenditures PAC spent over $1.5 million on campaign mailers, TV commercials, and newspaper ads on behalf of candidate Laura Freeman. Islamic Gulen Charter Schools also are spending more money for the November 8th election. Conservatives generally support charter schools. Why is Laura Freeman, a far-left liberal progressive Democrat from the East Coast, so close, is backed...
So, Mr. Mohill, let's pause the time for just a moment so we don't lose any time, and I do want to explain to you again, this is the same type of discussion, that discussion of state offices are not appropriate. Criticism of current council members, that's, go at us, but discussing something such as a state office and statewide issues as it relates to a particular candidate are not appropriate. So I'd like to swing you back into subject matter.
Well, Mrs. Freeman represents the city of Glendale, and the people of Glendale should know what her record is and who supports her. In this case, the radical Islamic charter schools called the Gulen Schools. They're radical, and the public should know about them.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, and it's, it's your discretion and your call, but I would say it does seem outside the scope. As, as a limited public forum and under the Brown Act, any speaker is entitled to come up and criticize the policies, programs, and procedures of the agency, and that includes of council members and actions that they take, council members have taken. So I think, like, as you, as you already referenced, things that council members have done up here on the dais is certainly fair game, and, but it seems to me that other, other things that are not related to actions or words or taken by council members is outside the scope of what may be addressed to council, but again, I leave it to your discretion.
I like to talk about Mrs. Freeman's record. That's important, and that's what I'm going to talk about tonight as she seeks a higher office. The public should know she represents the city of Glendale, and she now wants to go further up the scale, and I believe the public should know her record. Who supports her? Who's behind the money? Isn't that important for the public to know?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, the, the opportunity for people to speak, I will only add, is to, again, address the council on matters that pertain to, to the city and to actions that the city can take in its role as, that the council can take as council members. So my view is it's, it's outside the scope of what is properly addressed before the council. We have, from time to time, let it go beyond, just because we have these ongoing debates with Mr. Mohill, and I think, I think we've just decided to throw up the white flag. Hold on, I'm speaking.
Okay, okay.
We've just decided to throw up the white flag sometimes and just give him his five minutes and let it be done. But for the record, I should state, in many cases such as this, it is outside the scope of what is properly addressed before the council.
And I'll do respect, Mr. Garcia. If I'm not mistaken, last week, Mrs. Freeman brought up an issue called, let's have, what is it, Meatless, was it Monday or Friday? What does that have to do with the city of Glendale's business? Why does she bring that up?
I'm not here to have a debate with Mr. Mohill.
Okay, so it's good for her but not for the public to talk about issues? That had nothing to do with the business of the city. But I'm talking about how her record affects the residents of Glendale and the surrounding community because she's seeking a higher office.
Okay, here's the issue. You're not talking about her voting record on the city council.
Yes, I am.
If that's what you're saying, then we can permit that. It's so much easier if you just call us liars and cheaters.
No, I don't have to do that.
This little...
But it's important to know...
As long as it's related...
It's related.
To things that occur in the city.
Yes.
The Meatless Mondays was a discussion on events in the city.
It wasn't in my, it wasn't on my calendar and anybody else. All of a sudden, she wants to talk about a federal or state issue, has nothing to do with the city of Glendale business.
So your comments are permitted...
Why does she talk about the roads and the sidewalks?
Your comments are permitted as long as they involve issues that we handle on the city or events occurring in the city of Glendale.
Right, okay. And I'm going to talk about schools, because that affects us, does it not, Mr. Mayor?
Let's go ahead and start the thing. Let's see how, how you craft your words, Mr. Mohill.
Okay, let me start again from the beginning, if I may.
Okay, out of fairness, we did, we did interrupt your rhythm, so let's start again. But please, now, you understand what we're looking for.
We're talking about schools now.
There might be a way for you to get to where you want to go, but not the last path you took.
We're talking about schools. Absolutely, because after all, there is a partnership, I might not, between the schools and the city of Glendale and the school board. Okay, can I have my five minutes back, please? Thank you, Art. Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. In the primary election for the 43rd Assembly District, the Islamic Gulen Charter Schools' Independent Expenditures PAC spent over $1.5 million on campaign mailers, TV commercials, and newspaper ads on behalf of Glendale candidate, Councilwoman Laura Freeman. Islamic Gulen Charter Schools are also spending more money for the November 8th election. Conservatives generally support charter schools. Why is Laura Freeman, a far-left progressive Democrat from the East Coast, so close and is backed by the Islamic Gulen Charter Schools?
But you're not bringing it back home, Mr. Mohill.
Mrs. I am. Mrs. Freeman is of Jewish faith as I am. Why would someone of the Jewish faith want to be associated with an individual like Iman Mohammed Fatoua Gulen, whose religion is intolerant to Judaism, gays, and, and women? Plus, Iman Mohammed Fatoua is Turkish, and that country denies, does not recognize the Armenian genocide.
Time out. You're not bringing it to anything that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council.
I'm talking about charter schools, and charter schools are only a matter of a week or year or whatever to be in Glendale, because this man...
Well, you haven't said that.
This man, this man promotes charter schools, who she's getting her money from, $1.5 million, and it's only a matter of time. He has, right now, 26 schools.
How much time is remaining?
3:54.
He's been up there for 10 minutes. You might as well just let him go at this point.
I'm going to let you speak, but I, for the last time, it has to be something that is germane to the operation of the city or events occurring in the city.
It's about the schools?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr....
Let me start that paragraph one more time from the beginning, if I may. Mrs. Freeman is of Jewish faith as I am. Why would someone of the Jewish faith want to be associated with an individual like Iman Mohammed Fatoua Gulen, whose religion is intolerant to Judaism, gays, and women? Plus, Iman Mohammed Fatoua Gulen is Turkish, and that country denies, does not recognize gays, and women? Plus, Iman Mohammed Fatoua Gulen is Turkish, and that country denies and does not recognize the Armenian genocide, Jewish Holocaust, and does not have a very friendly relationship with the Jewish state of Israel, NATO nations, and the European Union nations today. Mohammed Gulen is a Turkish Islamist writer and preacher, and with a secret plan to bring Sharia law to America. As the second-largest chain of charter schools in the United States, Gulen Islamic schools bring in tens of millions of U.S. tax dollars every year. As of January 12, 2014, Islamic Gulen schools operate 139 schools throughout the country in 26 different states, which can be in Glendale tomorrow. Recently, L.A. Unified School Board member Scott M. Shishmerleson, who voted against the renewal of Magnolian Gulen Charter Schools, stated that they have a very, they have a great educational problem, but called them "most secretive schools" he had seen. Magnolia has consistently refused to show their records and their books. Magnolia was importing foreign teachers and other foreign school workers and their immediate family members. Magnolia brought in nearly 100 workers, almost all from Turkey. Anti-Sharia activist Pam Geller says Iman Fatoua Gulen has been dubbed "the Turkish Khomeini." It has been widely reported for years that Gulen wants to restore the Islamic Caliphate in Turkey. That alone should make his charter schools in the United States a subject of law enforcement scrutiny, but it is not. Individuals who have broken with Fatoua Gulen characterize the Gulen movement as an Islamic ultra-conservative, secret society. And Fatoua Gulen himself, as an idologue, Gulen tolerates no dissent. He's only interested in power and influence. Gulen dreams of a new age in which Islam will dominate and the West return to the ways of the Ottoman Empire. Iman Fatoua Gulen has become an expert at buying influence from politicians in Washington, D.C., and state capitals. Since 2008, the Islamic Gulen faith movement has secretly funded over 200 oversea trips for congressional lawmakers and staff. I'm certain if candidate Arti Kasakian knew that independent expenditure campaign money of any amount was coming from the KKK or the Nazi Party, he would denounce these two radical organizations and would not want his good name to be associated with these intolerant groups. Unlike Laura Freeman, who has not said one word, and repeat myself, one word about the Islamic Gulen movement. Why is Iman Mohammed Gulen backing Laura Freeman? Folks, it's called money. Money is mother's milk of politics. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you understand that it relates to schools, and Glendale has a school situation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as much as I can't believe I'm going to respond to that, whatever that was, I would suggest that Mr. Mohill go to the California Secretary of State's website, which lists all the money that goes into campaigns and into independent expenditures. And he can see that there's no money from this individual or from the schools he mentioned in my campaign, or as far as I know, in anyone supporting me, including the California Charter School Association. Not one dime. So I think you should do that, Mr. Mohill, because your credibility and the credibility of the people you're supporting, I think, really depend on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards?
For any new business.
Yeah, Mrs. Friedman, I've left a motion.
I have two.
It's the one, it's, the one is the traffic safety grant, so not that one, the other one dealing with...
Read the traffic safety?
No, the other one.
Okay, I'm going to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a legal services agreement with the law firm Jones Hall, a professional law corporation, Charles Adams, to provide legal advice related to bond disclosures for the city of Glendale and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian, Mayor Devine, Mayor Protem Najarian.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.